Hello, I'm Lingyin Kungkam San. I'm from Gusu Seta in Xarela. I'm from Laranian University. But I was recently promoted to the senior deputy governor of the city. And I'm currently the deputy vice president of the city. I'm not a senior, but I'm a senior. So I'm going to be the deputy vice president. And I'm going to be the deputy vice president of the city. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from Canada. And I'm from Peru. I'm from Brazil. And I'm from Thailand. I'm from Australia. I'm from Thailand. I'm from Thailand. So I'm from Peru. I'm from Tanzania. 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 So I'm from Malamshu University. And I'm from Tanzania. I'm from Tanzania. I'm from Tanzania. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Losal. I'm from Tanzania. I'm from Tanzania. And I'm from Switzerland. 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 So I'm from Switzerland. 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 But I'm from Thailand. I'm from Thailand. But I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. And I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. So I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. So I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. And I'm from Thailand. I'm from Thailand. So I'm from Switzerland. So I'm from Switzerland. I'm from China. 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 I'm from Europe. I'm from Canada. I'm from China. 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 Goodbye.
I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Tibet. 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 Behind the politician, there is also a private person. I know that. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Switzerland. It's important to know who you are, where you come from. Doesn't matter if you speak perfect Tibetan or not. That doesn't mean that you are less Tibetan. My dream and hope is that we get a free Tibet. It doesn't matter if we go back. I'm from Thailand. 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 So my biggest hope is really, my biggest dream is get back our nations and we are a free nation and united again. I'm from Thailand. I'm from Thailand. I'm from Thailand. I'm from Losal. 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 Shall we go in? Yes. I'm from China. 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 But I'm from Switzerland. It's opposite. I'm from China. I have the back seats. I can better see your own people and you can listen and you can better control and have that... You don't have to turn. And if you are speaking, the people turn to your side. So it's much better. And I can show you my place. Now I'm bored of partying and I see here. It's quite a good seat, I like. I stand up, I have a very good sight to all the people. And yeah. And then if you want to talk, you have to push the button. And this is my ID. Put it in here, then... Of course now it's not on, but then put it on and the president sees who's going to talk and then she's gonna... She's gonna go and just talk to her. I don't know what time.
I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal.
I'm from Losal.
Coffee is a good thing.
Coffee is a good thing. I'm from China. I'm from China.
Yes.
I'm from China.
I'm from China.
I'm from Tibet. I'm from Tibet. I'm from Tibet.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from Tibet. I'm from Tibet. I always, if I make a coffee, first I'm gonna warm and heat my cup. And people make a joke, "What are you doing?" Always this special way. I say, "Because the coffee, it's not hot enough." So... I'm from Tibet. I'm from Tibet. I'm from Tibet.
Yes. I'm from China. 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 I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. The elections are very close, so I have to be a little bit nervous. I'm from Chongye. I'm from Chongye. I'm from Mingar. And I have a seat there, so since four years, I'm in the city government.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. And it's very important to get involved. I'm from China. 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 So they also worked for the Tibetan society, but also in the Swiss society where we lived. And I just... Probably I just followed their steps and so I started to work in... Work or get involved in different organizations. And that helps, of course, for a political career because if people see that you're involved, not only when the elections are very close and then people talk nice and show their campaign posters. I mean, you have to work. There's nothing good unless you do it. So... I... For example, I'm from a football club. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from Junior Chamber International. I'm from China. I'm from president. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from Ice Hockey. I'm an ice hockey player, actually. I'm always making a joke. I'm not that tall, but was quite good. So I played ice hockey for many years.
I'm from Chongye. I'm from Chongye.
Yes. I'm from Chongye. So that helped. That helped because I'm from China. In our place, I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. So I can't count on the Tibetan votes alone. They wouldn't help, not at all. So I need Swiss people to vote for me.
And I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. You have to be stable, hardworking. You have to go to people. They have to get to know you. And I... I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I think people, if they believe that you are listening to them and really try to find a solution. And if you're not problem-oriented... Actually, problems there, there, but I'm not that much interested in the problems. I'm more interested to find a solution. Yes. I'm from China. And you also have to be... You also have to be ready to make compromises. If everyone thinks he has the best idea and sticks to his own idea, you won't find a solution. So I think this is important. And then be yourself and... And at the end, in politics or in business, it's hard work. I mean, it's not the spotlight or the work in the parliament when you speak in front of the microphone. The hard work is behind at the meetings where you find the solutions. And there you have to just make your work. Do your work. Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. Before we lost Tibet.
Oh, I'm from China.
She was in an English school with nuns and priests. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. 10th March. I'm from Losal. And we all know what happened, the riots. I'm from China. I'm from China. They got split in that situation from their family. I'm from China. I'm from China. They got left in Losal.
I'm from Losal.
My grandmother was pregnant and also had two children. And my pala was the oldest. I'm from China. I'm from China. They got split. I'm from China. I'm from China. When they... After months. And so they came to India.
I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. 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 There's a Tibet house. Tibet house from the Red Cross.
I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. They were also with the group. I'm from China. Went there as an interpreter. I'm from China. And he was there. And I'm from China. Came with another group of children. Lots of children. I'm from China. And I'm from China. They got... How to say that? Yes.
First step, having children.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China.
Must be love of the first sight.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. Yes. I'm from China. My parents were happy. They were lucky.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China.
Yes.
I'm from China.
Yes.
Yes. I'm from China. 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 I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. If you're even a politician or if you take yourself too serious, people don't like it here. And we are used to... We don't have a huge staff who's gonna work for you. So... We are very button up, the state. The state is very button up. Also the thinking. So... For us, it's normal. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. Losal was always very special, even though we weren't that many Tibetans. In our place, we belonged the only family. But Losal was always very special the preparation before. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. And I'm from... I'm from China. I'm from China. You go to bed and when you wake up in the morning, everything is made very nice, decorations. I'm from China. I'm from China. And in the background, we had Tibetan music, all the cars were there. I'm from China. I'm from China. It was very special. Yes. I'm from China. 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 Yes. Actually, Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. Yes.
I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. Losal is still special. I never work at Losal. Never. My kids don't go to school at Losal. Losal is highly prominent for us. We don't go to work. We don't go to school. We don't spend money on the first day of Losal. I'm from Losal.
Yes. I'm from Losal.
So this probably more... I would say... I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. The whole year, the money just runs through your fingers. And well, it's okay for me. So I say, probably, even though it's the day where stay with your family. I'm from China. Stay with your family. Have a good time with your family. Take time for your family. I'm from Losal. To the temple. So I mean, we are better off than the Christians. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. So we have 10 days of Losal, so that's good. So we have more enough time to spend with other people. So one day...
I'm from Losal.
I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal.
Yes. I'm from China. Losal officially is official. I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. They respect religious days and so that you can take off your kids from the school. I'm from China.
I'm from China.
Pu Sun. Pu Sun is Pu Genxie and Luchudure. And I'm from Cema Niya. I'm from Luchichaya. Pu Sun.
I'm from China. Yes. I'm from China.
Yes. I'm from China. I met it was really a coincidence. I'm from... I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. So we said, "Let's go out." And we went out in Zurich. I'm from Losal. I'm from Losal. I met my... I met my... Now my wife and there I met my... Not my girlfriend, but I met my wife at that moment. It was really a coincidence because I didn't know her before. Which is special because normally we all know each other in Tibetan society. I'm from Losal. So probably that might be why I wasn't interested the years before. I don't know.
First sight, yes.
The first sight, we just had, we talked and then we met and then we met again. So yeah.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. It's compulsory. So it's not really that you can say you want to choose. And for me, it was always clear. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. So I said, "For me, it's clear. I joined the military force because you have to go and I would be always ready to defend this country where I live and the people which are living in this country." So for me, it was clear to join. And I went there and then they chose me also for an officer career. I'm from China. 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 I'm from Asian. I'm from China. 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 For example, because you give something back to the country and also you can show that we are able to do the same like the people which are born and living here since generations. So I thought this is a chance and for me, a commitment and also an obligation to do so. And a bit also to be... To show that we Tibetans, of course, we can do it. That... Officer Kashi is from China. Even higher than my... I'm from China. I was at the end captain.
Oh, lost, lost. I'm from Switzerland. I'm from Nepal. I'm from China.
I'm from China. World War II. I'm from China. But they're neutral. But it stayed at the border. I'm from China. But the people, especially now, nowadays, when you have the situation in Ukraine, there's a lot of talk and also Switzerland, as a neutral state, is investing in the military even more now.
Oh, okay. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. In the military infrastructures, planes, also tanks and different kind of systems. Because all the other ones getting in the age. So you also have... Look, there were talks like, "Do you really need a military anymore?" And there were some talks like that also here in Switzerland, especially a very neutral state. But on the other hand, I think every state has to... Has to be the obligation also to look for his own border and to be prepared and also you can't count on the other ones. It's not the right strategy to say the other ones should do the work for us. I mean, Switzerland won't attack other countries. But still, as a neutral state, you have to show that you're neutral. And to be neutral, you also have to be able to keep your borders safe, for example, and your own territory. So I think this is a good thing and I'm from... I'll be very much for a good army. Because I think it's important to have that. Security is not for free. We all know that.
Yes. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China. I'm from China.
I'm from China. Yes. I'm from Swiss UBS. I'm from... I have to remember it was like starting in the mid-'90s. Mid-'90s. I'm from... I'm from... And then I studied, made a new study. I studied social work. Actually, I was a bit fed up with the banking. Wasn't totally mine. I wasn't always satisfied. So I changed. I studied social work, something totally different. I joined the public service and worked for different organizations and cities. And I'm from... UBS. This is the biggest bank, and now the biggest bank from Switzerland, and one of the bigger ones in the world, actually, yeah.
Swiss, odi gi, ta, tindu nyima, chale na nyi, nyi, di, di gi secret, do de kara, ta buli ki, mangbo chi, swissla, swisski, da, nde, kera chumbucha, goa, di, samu do de kara, revilt chena, tri.
Ta peche di, ta kabora, chik da di ra, swissla ra, dudid, World War Two, ra. Dudid, they were lucky, we had a lot of luck, ra. They didn't get that much involved, so the country was quite stable. An mimamote, dudid becha the swissla, the me, the wealthy people, they also put their money into Switzerland, because they hoped it was, it was secure. Chik di chera. Ani, probably, it's, I mean, the banking, it's, it's important that you are, that you are, you have kind of seriosity, you do your work. You do serious work, and I guess the people look at Switzerland, and they, it's like, I mean, if, if there's a brand, and it's, and it's written Swiss made. It has a, it's, it stands for quality. Probably, reputation is good. And once you have a good reputation, I mean, I wouldn't say Switzerland does everything better. But if you have a good reputation, you have to earn this. However you did it, you have to earn it. And I guess probably Switzerland did it, and people here are hardworking, ra. People, work is very important in Switzerland. Very important, it's very, it's like, so, I mean, here, like in many other countries, but, I would say, the second question, if someone asks you something, is, what are you working? So it shows a bit. I wo- I wouldn't say that's the, that's, I don't think it should always be like this, ra. Sometimes I get a little bit annoyed of the, of these questions, but it shows the mentality. But it's very difficult for me to say which really is the secret of the Swiss banking. Ah, no, sometimes, diyor ba. Every country has some, some specialties, and they, really, swissda di ra, chuzere che, Swiss made chuzere yoboyore, di chere. Banking, chocolate, mountains. But there's more, of course, like in every other country too.
Di gana, miksei ki, dikzu di.
Ya.
Swissla, nasusna, gonda chuzer chue che, ya, namdu pu machu, ya, ta, gonda namdu gora yoma ra. Ani, gonda chuzer chue che, ya, shawo, ta, mi ri che yoma, sumu da.
Re, re, re.
Anz, tindu nyima, da, konsa yore, anz, namgyu puzo, ya, la, che, tindu ta, ya, chero ra. Swissla ma, de, tindu ta, di, haijin da, di, ho, da, tindu da. Ta tindu, dikzu, tindu, ha, le, wa, mi, peta, ya, ru, ma, ma, anz.
Ta dikzu di chi yoma re, da, ta di susu, diyor ba, it's like, it's like in the habit of the people, ra, reja, di re.
Swissla, bintishta, akarsa. Suicidal tourism la.
Tourism?
Yeah, suicidal tourism, tindu, swissla, su, susu, rangsi gayi, di, pa, tindu gi, suicidal tourism, and chikla gi, and bintishta, nde yor ba.
Yeah, there is some, anz di ra, very, chik da di gana, swiss, very, it's very liberal state. Which, which means that, we want, in Switzerland, it's like, we don't want to have a government who is too strong. We don't want to have too many laws, too many regulations, ra. And if, and I wouldn't say it's a suicidal tourism. But we had, we have, there is the possibility, if someone really wants to, there's, who is really ill, and sick, very heavy. There is the possibility to, to go this way. Of course, doktor nimda, ra. And there is the possibility. But I wouldn't say we have a tourism in that, that way, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't go that far. Wouldn't go that, but kyaan kabana ha voya di.
Dokumente chingna ngola, swiss, swissku, la, di, tongsan.
Wow, very interesting.
La da la, anh tinge chare, gabso, la da la, na, anzuki, mi, tange, tindu shuna, limbo, mi, te, xiamasun, mi mangbo chi, diischi. Samu tanga, di, diischi, tando, tando, traditional yor ba. Chenele, la da gi, saji chikla, har du, sex tourism, chikdu yang. Arin ki, miri ki, che, sumu da, anzoki. Chige miksei ki, Europe, kuni, arin, kunku ki, arin valley, siji, saja de, susu ki, bu gu ri, ya, go chay, che, du, tindu lego re.
Ah, le, tinga chikke, komas, tindu.
Miksei, hang sanska, re, na, la da, ukrang ki, saja, miksei ki, Himalaya, satwa, tindu la, anz, samu tanga, tando, traditional sa, doa. Yimba, ndele, ndele gi, saja chikla, anh, ndele yor, la, di, anh, di miksei, rochre, doa. Anh, di na, shing, da, anh, swissla, o, ndele chire, siji, dokumente, tindu ngola, ndele, de, xigi, doa. Di kanje, rochina, rocham sa.
Di, anh, di, anh, di, komas, for me, the first time I heard that, I didn't know that.
Ya ma, komede, ya ma, diischi, chesa. Jingla, tindu, ta chunji ne, susu, salon, tindu, 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 gi, gumje, tindu, gi, sports la, shuwa, di doa, miksei to, na, dochi. An tindu nyima, yimba, yimba, sport, ndele, gana, genzie, na, nyu sha. Tindu di campaign ki, poste, de la, chega, chega, dochi, ta susu ki, sugui ki, chashi, chik, sports, ra, na, tando. Sumsa, di, anh, la, chungdi ni, di, ta, de, cha, tando, de kanje.
Tindu di, anh, chunji gana, anh, sports ga voya, ra. Ta poli, na, ice hockey, skiing, judo, 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 anh, no mamochi. Ani, ta anh, tanda, anh ki, anzoki, chongge, na, ra. I'm responsible for education and sports. So ta anh, di sports clubs, nimdo, da, doa mamoyor ba, di chere. And the campaign is built on that, we show that behind the politician, there is also a private person. So that's why it's blatant, I chose ice hockey, because, anh nyima ice hockey, no mamochi, anh, tanda, samza, ni, puzo, nimdo, zema, zema, zego, doyore. On the campaign, nyeki stick re, nyeki ransk stick, which I use, my gloves, my helmet, my shirt. So it's, it's, I think that's very important, I didn't, wasn't, it's not from, it's not a show off, it's really my stuff, my gear. So it stands for me, and people know that I'm on the ice hockey field, they, they meet me there sometimes, ra. So it's a very important, I think, that you use something which is, which, which, which chose the reality. And anh, sports, di ga voya, ra. Di gana, ta, anz, sports, chokpa, konza, shukchamoyor. Yeah, konza member mamoyor ba, it's very important, and sports here is very, it's a very important issue, I mean, in states, ra. And we are, swissla, ra, na, na, ra, we have lots of clubs. And I, and I mean, the people, all the people, the many, many people are engaged in clubs. My boys, mi puzo, ra, konza poli club na yor. One is, ni, konza politiger, another one is handball, it's a European game, where you throw the ball into, into the goal, it's a very tough game, di, ko, ko di, yor. Di na, shi, konzo, in a youth club, konzo, yor, like a boy scout, jobo chi, yor, ra, di na, konzo, yor. So it's very important to, to get engaged there, and, and also do something for the society. Anh, da nyima ne, choba daman, yor, ra. So it shows that I'm someone who knows the need of the clubs, of the sports, clubs, and all the other ones. I know what, what hard work they do each day. And that gives, that's like, that's like, the way to show that I know what they are interested in, and it gives a connection. So that's why I chose this.
Jingni, anz, susu, gera, ble, shajishun, susu, sugui, halte, chko doa, di gi, anh, di, poste, de, do, re. La, anh, komedi, ya ma, treje, chins, ra. Tindu, anh, sports di, tindu, 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 jimis, yes, sumu da, jimmy.
Konza jimmy, la, re, tinga, anz, de, jimme, la, ya, jimmy, ra. Jimmy, da, da, do, do.
Re, re, re. Di gi, tindu, anz, sports ki, ken, ki na gi, di, anh, kajin, shengge, anz, sports da, de, yo, ni, nyamdu, komechi, go, chungsa, chik, tana, shi, ge, re. Kajin, anh, national team na ngola, tindu, ritmi, jimnes, jimnes, chik, tindu, pumuchunjushu, pebatsi. Di nyamdu, komechungsa. Konzuki, ukrangzi, ye, national team na ngola, zengere, re, ra, yimba, ne, tushon, tza, ukrangzi, susu, tanga, gi, doa. An di la, miksei, gimbendu, che, kanjer. Shunggi, miksei, tushon, tanga.
Shung da, shung, miksei, chigma, anz, da, ten, of course, there are some money, but in Switzerland, really, di, here, sports, susu, susu, chokpa, konza, susu, becha, tau. There is not really, in Switzerland, it's like, build on that, ra. Clubs, you know, if you are a skier, if you're a mountain biker, if you're a footballer, if you're a tennis player, tamokan susu, susu, tushon, mambo, susu, tau, re, di re. There's not such a big thing, like a big, how you say that, that the state or the government comes and spends money for you. Ah, di, tza, tza, anz, re, sa.
Ta tindu, tindu, shukchere, di, chapsi, na ngola, tuzi, tanga, gi, ra. Di gi, susu, tindu, gema, mangbo, chi, na, doa. Di gi, ha, koe, di, ba, chik, di, tindu, nyima, chik, di, daily routine, che, kanje, do, che.
Daily routine, chuzi, anh, da, chera, anh, ya, la, re. Ani, anh, ya, la, coffee, chik, dung, chukti, par, anh, chapa, da, online, chapa, di, di, la, ra, di, shua, da, da, suguchu, di, che, ra. Ani, chuzi, dubats, anh, legon, doyore. Dubats, legon, che. Ani, tambu, task, kashir, yor, ra. Ta lega, chik, yor, de, ta, tindu, di, che. Me, anh, tamad, la, me, tamad, di, lega, che, ra, di, kashir, che, tindu, di, me, go, chun, ra, ra, me, tuzi, shugu, go, shugu, go, do, ra. Ta di, me, te, te, sugusha, lega, di, che. Di shua, chuzi, gubatso, anh, staff, yor, ra, nyeki secretary. Di nimdo, chuzi, chavats, konza, report, yor. Di, di, che. Anh, di shua, chungdu, mamoyor. Chungdu, che, ta, tza, chungdu, daman, yor, ra. There are many different working groups which are reporting to me, or different projects which are running. Di, chungdu, daman, yor, di, che. Ningu, shojen, anh, sa, yoma, da. Sa da, da, sa, basa, anh, shojen, de, sa, me.
Kajin ni?
Chik, di re, ta, ta, di re, anh, da, anz, da, di, legon, legon, na, lega, che, ra, ra. Ta anh, luze, luze, che, susu, anh, tuzi, mamu, me. Anh, kala ga voya, ra. It's more, the reason is more disciplined, because, and I'm, I want to stay a bit fit. I'm not getting too, too fat, so that's why I, I, I don't take the, the, the breakfast, even though breakfast is very important, of course. But I'm used to it, ra, di chere. And chuzi, junni, chavats, I make a break. Mostly, I stay in office, it's a short break, half an hour. Eat something little, normally. And then, goes again, work starts again, then there are other meetings, che, ra. And depends. If I have time, I go home, and then we have dinner together. Buzo, da, ne, jimmy, anz, gonda, kala, sa, sa, ra, di chere. Ta, the reality is this. Each week, I have, let's say, at three nights, evenings, I have meetings. So, from Monday to Friday, probably at two or three nights, evenings, I'm not at home. I'm at meetings, and I'm getting home late.
Di gi, susu ki, chale, ta, susu, gera, di, bu, ru, lam, miksei, balanced, dochi, nyatan, kanje, nyatu.
Ta, chik, di ra, lega, gabo, chine, ra. It's not that, for me, it's not that tough. But the balance between, na, me, private time, and lega, da, unet, I have to be honest, it's not that easy. Even, even if, especially if you have kids. But at the weekends, for example, ne, ki, puzo, ta, luze, mamochi, ra, they have games, games, ra. Games, ona, anh, pick, da, do, yor. Anh, mora, ta, samza, puzo, samza, lu, ra, mora, lu, ta, che, tinga, dabas, che, yor. Because this is really important for me. Ta, konza, bu, lapda, buzo, lapda, chik, chik, play, chik, you know, ka, chik, you know, I always go, I always visit that, I always look, I always join that, ra. But, which, I mean, in politics, it's a strange, it's a strange business, a strange job. What I don't have is that much time for myself, let's say, for all, for doing all same sports. I do sports, sometimes, but together with the kids. Bu, kuzi, ni, me, samza, te, pu, te, ice hockey, che, ra, but not very, kandila, regularly, ra. Always, I don't, I don't have time for that, so, yeah.
Ta, tindu, legun, chale, di, full time, na, gi, yor.
Full time, re.
Oh, okay. Kasan, yang, kanton, la, kanje, la.
Kanton Zurich, ta anz, kanton, san, ka, chikba, ma, re.
Kashira, yang, di, half. Part time, do.
Part time, re, anh, di, Zurich, ta anz, di, di, gank here, di, yor, ra, or responsibility, they are not the same, not exactly the same. Ta di, anz, lumba, di, miksei, re, di, susu, ra. States, they are very different, and autonomy is very important in here, autonomy. From the states, from the, from the national government, then you have the, the, the states, which are cantons. And they are very eager for their autonomy. And the same thing is from the, the local communities. Especially our state is very eager, and looks that we have our own autonomy. We also, we are also, but we are responsible for the most thing, for financing, financing all our infrastructure. The most thing of them, we do it ourselves, that's why. So you're, so, so I also have to take responsibility for that.
Jing, di, cheshu, che, chage, sa, ra, ba.
No.
Jing, kyaan, cheshu, che, chage.
Di, ma, anz, di, peche, swissla, di, five, the fifth place, anh, anh, ba, re, peche. Cheshi, di, Zurich.
Ta tindu, gi, na ngola, tindu, gi, le, sa, de, le, da, pekakura, di na ngon, ni, kalau, re. Anz, chilon, ni, le, ge, di, ndele, gi, konel, le, da, pekakura.
Ta, zia, lela, voya, mi du, di, re, shang. But I don't think then, in this way, because, I mean, I never, I never, I never planned this, this career, and, I just started, ra, just started. And at the end, after many years of work, I got elected, and it wasn't more difficult than for the others. But, in the study, ra, the, tipna, study, ra, tindu, anz, da, ra. Then, chuzo, chumi, in the study, samu swiss miri, ra, re, doa. Chige, me, in, tena, ra, temi, mi du. Ta peche, anh, chikba, re, shang, ah, re. So, it's not that easy to get elected, di ra. For sure, it's more helpful if you have, if you have people which work for you, if you have more Tibetans, that would be helpful, of course. And our state is quite conservative, which doesn't make it easier. That means, you have chances to get in, in a parliament, but you have to do work before. Or you need a lot of money, maybe.
Jingla, ta, tindu, sumpa, la, tindu, di, che, sumu da. Di, la, la, anh, ki, samshu, da, tengzi, ro, di, kwan, nyi, tu, zo, di.
Ta anh, di, lega, che, di, anh, ga voya, ra. And, I mean, it's important work, anh, di, ta, kandisla, ra. Parliament, na, lega, chener, ra. You make, di, ra, laws and regulations, laws, karre, pegen, di, ra, chim, yor, ra, chim, lega, che, di, kaj, chembora. And it's very interesting, or to be able to make decisions for infrastructure. Which is very interesting. So it's very, the variety of topics is very interesting, di chere, ra. Anh, di, ga voya, che, it's like, really, I'm very highly motivated to do this. And, so, this is actually which, 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 which I like. I like to be a part of something, to, to have the chance to get involved. I'm not, I'm not that very good on the passenger seat, so I like to, to be able to, to get involved, and to, to help, find solutions, like I said, and. Ta, de, le, ca, ra, ra. Cema, ni, che, ra, ta, no, gets, there, ra. Ta, anh, no, chunji, du, no, chunji, re, no, chunji, la, no, no, gapchun, ani, ra. Ta, anh, have enough strength, feel fit, so why shouldn't I? There's no reason to, to step back at the moment, but I don't know. Who knows what, what, what time brings, and. But I'm Yeah. But I'm 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 You're a beginner. Now I'm uh I'm really feel 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 comfortable. Feel comfortable in the In the parliament. But Uh So I I know a lot of people and that makes uh That makes it easier to do the political work if you have a A Network.
Um hum.
And so uh I think it's uh now good and important to stay and I hope that the the people give me their words and 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 trust and uh Yeah. Like I said, I'm I'm motivated.
Um hum. So But Then Yeah.
Then I'm Uh Tell Me Did You I'm Tell Me Tell Me Good The Low Good Um Good Yeah. Did I'm Um hum. After my Officer Academy, Officer Military Officer Academy Time Did I had some spare time.
Um hum.
I'm Did Uh Pay Me Ja Me And I'm Did I'm Yeah. I'm I'm Yeah.
Um Did You Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I'm
Yeah. This Yeah. Sure.
Ja Me Sure I'm Haha. Think You Yeah. I'm I'm Me Can Yeah. Uh huh. Sure I'm I'm Yeah. Um huh. So So They Don't 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 Yeah. One I mean It's so silent. I Really loved India. Yeah. Ja Ja I always enjoy my stay. Doesn't matter. I Did Man Did I'm Did I'm Yeah. I'm Uh Hold On Cool On I Was I Was A To see that and uh Was Was Very interesting.
Um huh. But Man Sure I'm Yeah. Yeah.
Uh Da Last time I'm I'm Do Uh Last time Uh I guess was 2014.
Oh, okay. Um huh. Yeah. And So Then Check You I'm Go You Sure.
Oh.
Good Good Check I'm Yeah.
That I had the privilege in that I was invited for uh For lunch.
Um huh.
Did Uh That Politician Has Yeah. I'm I'm But I had the chance. Uh I was asking, of course, I Who would resist? But uh I mean, I'm If His Holiness The Good You I mean, you don't talk. Otherwise, if he asks you and uh I mean, I was uh I was more than Was a Highlight of my life uh and uh And I had the chance to change a few words. But I wouldn't say that we had a big discussion because there were other ones. But we are seen like this. But I was, but who wouldn't be? I was kind of shy, by His Holiness. Our leader sitting there, and it's very special. But you have to talk.
Sure, sure. I think you have to learn. 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 But you. So, I mean. I think you have to learn. 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 But sometimes, then, I think, I think, I think. 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 I think.
Um, that. I think. I think. I think. He always said, get involved, be thankful, be a good ambassador for Tibet. But, I mean, I think, Buddhism, if we are here on earth, we should do something which is meaningful. If you have the chance. I mean, it doesn't matter what you do, actually. I think. I think. I think. I think. But if you have the possibility to get, to help other peoples, to make a better life for them, not always thinking just for yourself. So, I think this influenced many Tibetans, most of us, and also me, of course, because, I mean, His Holiness is someone who is a dad role model since I can think. And of course, influenced also my way. And I hope that I can. How to say that? I hope my doing is. Some time, I think. I mean, I know that we Tibetans here, I think, we are few. And we also have the opportunity, but also the responsibility to show the people, the world, that there's still a Tibetan issue which is unsolved. And it's easier if you get involved, if you could do good things, if we are, if we take part in the societies where we live. And then, people ask, where are you from? And if you say, I'm from Puni. And if you do a good job, if you do a good work, if you're a good human, people see that, and it's easier to connect. And I see that in Switzerland. Many people say, our Tibetans there, we love the Tibetans, they are good. And of course, we also have our failures, all of us. But this shows that when His Holiness went his path, and he is our leader, and of course, no one of us can follow his steps. But I think we have these obligations to tell the world that this Tibetan issue is still unsolved. And if we lead, every one of us, by a good example, that helps, I'm very, I'm very sure, that helps our cause. Because we don't have money, we don't have power. So all we are is our culture, is our religion. And our opponent is such a huge country. So what we have to give is our personality, our culture. So, and I'm always aware of this. And I think this is always a part which I have in my head when I do my work. At the end, people look at me, and they see, of course, me as a Swiss. But they see that I'm others, that I have another background. So I'm also always a Tibetan. And if they think Tibetans, they are good people, then I might help a little bit. So, this is for me a big motivation.
Wow. But. Then, I think you have to learn. I think you have to learn.
I think. Laws, I think.
I think. Then, I think you have to learn. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think.
I think. Sometimes, I think. Sometimes, I think. I mean, I think. I think. I'm in charge of them. Sometimes, I think. Group, I think, team, I think. I think. I think. I think. They have disturbance, they have maybe kind of little fights. Sometimes, I think. I think. So you have to split, you have to, maybe you have to fire some people, which is really always very hard. I mean, because behind them, there is a person, maybe there's a family. And it's really hard. I mean. I think. I think. I think. We just had this talk, actually, this morning. It's really hard. Sometimes, I think, for the sake of the whole, sometimes you have to take decisions which are not easy. If you are a manager, a director, especially also in the politics. You can't take decisions only for individuals. We have to keep in mind the whole. I think. Idea, or the work. And sometimes, I think, and then, if you have to get apart from a group, for one person, that's hard, it's not easy. So, I think. This, I think. I think. I think. I think. And I had to also fire some peoples, which is always really something which is not easy, which makes me also a little bit, how to say that? Which brings also sorrows, of course. It's not easy to do so, something. And I wouldn't say it's a big loss I had. I think. I think. I think. I think. But then, I think. I think. They went, they went okay or good. But it's hard to tell that, because I'm very self, I have very a lot of. On one hand, I'm very confident, but on the other hand, I'm never sure, is this good enough? Self-criticism. And sometimes, I can learn. And sometimes, I think, oh, this is really good. Can I pay? Sometimes, I think, I think. I think. It's a bit, it's difficult. It's not easy to do something like this, especially the camera is running. It's not very natural situation. And then, it's more that kind of things which I have. And luckily, most of my decisions, they were good. My business life, I was in many ways successful. The important things, they were successful. But of course, for example, in politics, I mean, elections are coming up, and who knows? Maybe people vote for me, maybe not enough votes. And if you don't have enough votes, then you lose. And everyone can see that, that you lose your seat. I mean, that's something which sometimes worries, maybe a bit. But on the other hand, I always say, you shouldn't make too many thoughts about possible things that they could happen, maybe they could happen, but who knows? So, I'm concentrating more on the situation now, which I can, which I am able to maybe to handle. Who knows what the future brings? So, I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. We'll see what happens.
Then, I think. I think. I think.
I mean, I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I don't know, I really don't know what. But then, I think. I'm sure I would find something, some kind of job which makes me, or gives me satisfaction. But I don't have a plan B. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think you have to concentrate on A. Otherwise, you don't give 100%. There are some people which have so many options, and you always think, ah, this person is thinking too many options. Get concentrated on what you are doing. Do this as good as possible. I think. 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 I think these are small, small problems, in my opinion. Of course, there are other ones. But I don't, I don't think I should make me. How to say that? I don't have this kind of sorrows, because the future brings what it brings.
Then, I think. I think. I think. I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think. 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 I think.
Then, I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. Dream, I think. I think. It's not enough just to dream. Go to, right? Make the step, right? I think. And if you have success, that's very good. If you lose, not a problem. Stand up, try again, right? I think. I think. I think. I know that. And I think. 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 And I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. Culture, right? It's important to know who you are, where you come from. Doesn't matter if you speak perfect Tibetan or not. That doesn't mean that you are less Tibetan, I'm really sure. And of course, sometimes, I think. Tibetan society should be more gentle also. Sometimes, I think. 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 Then you take, then you take the motivation for the people, that's not good. Right? I think. I think. We should, we should really help everyone who wants to get involved. And I think. Sometimes, I think. We have, sometimes, I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. Is it really reasonable to talk and have some disturbance and discussions over topics which I really think are not really that important and necessary? Sometimes, I think. I think. I think. I think. Five minutes after finishing, they can start a fight. How is that possible? I don't get it in my mind. So I really think. I think. I think. Discuss. We should be able to discuss clearly. We should be, every one of us should be able to say what he is thinking. And we should listen to each other. And we should find ways to communicate and to accept or respect, especially respect the opinions from the different individuals. It's really important. And sometimes, we shouldn't take us too serious. Oh, sometimes, I think. Which gets me more, let's say, it irritates me. I think we have all together, we have a responsibility and obligation to our country. We are outside, we have all a good life, we have many, many chances. But we shouldn't forget our brothers and sisters in Tibet. And therefore, we should go all together, with one hand, and should work together. And I guess there is still much work to do.
No, no.
I was a little bit, how to say that? Emotional, but on the other hand, it shows.
Sure, sure. I think.
I think. I think. I think.
Sure, sure. I think. I think. Sometimes, I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think.
Right.
I think. I think. I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think.
Yes.
I think. 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 I think.
Aha moments, the aha moments. I think. Four years ago, I think. I think. Government, when the people elected me, and with best results. That was really an aha moment. Because after many years, there were many, many, many candidates. And to get this trust from the people, that was really an aha moment. Even though with such a foreigner name, yeah. This was one of my aha moments. And of course, one of the biggest aha moments, birth of my kids.
Wow.
Because that changed the whole life.
I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think.
I think. I think. And that is. I think. I think. I think. I think. I've really felt this responsibility. Now I have to work for my, for my family, for my kids. I think. Really, it was a turning point. In the way I looked at work, in the seriousness I'm working, I really have to say that. I mean, I wouldn't say I didn't before, it wasn't that I didn't care. But it's really a big turning point. I felt that, really. Because now I have the responsibility for my wife, for my kids. And when you have one kid, even then, if you get free, it gets heavier, the load. But on the other hand, it's a good feeling, it's a very good feeling. So this was really an aha moment, I think. I think. It was really a big, big aha moment. Which. I think. I think. You have to feel it. When you feel it, it's totally different. It becomes reality.
I think. I think. I think. Dream, hope, ideas.
Yes.
Milam. Reva. Chari. But I think. I think. I think. I think. Hope. I think.
It's very easy. My dream and hope is that we get a free Tibet. I never, never lost that. I always dreamed of that, and I really hope that we, one time, we have a free Tibet and our sisters and brothers in Tibet have the same, can live the same way that we do. It doesn't matter if we go back. I think. 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 They have the chance to live in a democratic country. I think. That they have the same chances. I think. So my biggest hope is really, my biggest dream is that sometimes, in somewhere in the future, we have, we get back our nations, and we are a free nation and united again.
No. But I think. 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 I think.
Message. So. First, I hope you look this movie. Click, subscribe, of course, because aha moment is really a good form. I think it's a very nice idea of you. And yeah, I hope to see many people of you, if you come to Switzerland. Maybe you call, call up, if I can help, I really like to do that. And yeah, it's. So. So. And yeah, hope to see you somewhere. Take care.
No, no. Thank you. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. Smile. I think. 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 Black neck, under the blue skies. I think.
Ah, thank you.
I think. I think. I think.
Ah, thank you.
I think. Thank you so much. I think. I think.
I think. I think.
Yes.
I said a lot, thank you.
Yes, bye bye.
Bye bye, see you.